I call to order this regular meeting of the Monument Board of Trustees, July 19th, 2021. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Hogan, will you take role, please?
Mayor Wilson?
Here.
Mayor Protem Elliott?
Here.
Trustee Clark?
Here.
Trustee LeKind?
Here.
Trustee Romanella?
Here.
Trustee Stevens?
Here.
Trustee Anru?
Here.
Okay, before us, we have a consent agenda. Is there any modifications to the agenda?
Uh, yes, I move to move, uh, Resolution 7B and C to the consent agenda.
Okay, is there any qualms with that?
No.
No. Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as modified?
Motion to approve as modified.
Second. We have a motion of second, Ms. Hogan?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Anru?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Trustee LeKind?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Elliott?
Yes.
Trustee Stevens?
Yes.
Trustee Romanella?
Yes.
That motion is approved. First item on the agenda, oath of office, uh, item 3A, Chief Hemingway.
Commander Hudson and, uh, Trayvon, would you come forward? Morgan? We gotta put you on the spot also. Good evening, Mayor Wilson, Mayor Protem Elliott, Board of Trustees, Town Staff, Citizens of the Town of Monument. Good evening. I had the distinct honor and privilege to welcome, uh, Trayvon to the Monument Police Family tonight. Uh, we're very excited about this. Trayvon is a man of integrity, uh, who has also served our country in the U.S. Armed Forces. He's an educated man and a man who now wants to serve and protect the fine citizens of the Town of Monument, as well as the guests. Trayvon will be, uh, replacing one of the officers who was recently transferred to the Douglas County Sheriff's Office. Trayvon grew up in the state of Nevada and attended, uh, the Academy of Individualized Studies in Las Vegas. He's currently pursuing his master's degree at Liberty University. Congratulations. Trevor served the United States Army for seven years, assigned to the Special Operations Community. Upon an honorable discharge in 2015, Trevor spent six years with private security sector, leading executive protection teams on a global scale. Trayvon graduated from the Pike's Peak Regional Law Enforcement Academy of May of this year. Uh, and on his off time, Trayvon enjoys working out and coaching football. You're gonna fit in fine. Trayvon, uh, uh, in speaking with Trayvon, uh, earlier this afternoon, uh, I'm really proud to say that now he, uh, the number one thing he mentioned when he asked, when I asked him why he wants to serve, is he had a very positive experience as a youth in, uh, Las Vegas with some of the police officers there. And that really had an impact to pass that same, uh, feeling down to our youth now. And I can't tell you how more, uh, important that is, uh, in a day and age like today when, when the youth reads something on Facebook or just get flash information and make a quick assessment of how their interactions will be moving forward with the police department. So Trayvon, I commend you for, uh, for wanting to pass that feeling on down to the youth of America now. Yes. Uh, Trayvon chose Monument because he really enjoys the culture here. He enjoys the small town feel and a positive direction that the, uh, Monument Police Department's heading in. But more importantly, I truly think that he thinks the, uh, the ability to get to know the community well, uh, to have a one-on-one relationship with each, uh, with each resident and the guests that come through. I think he's, uh, really gonna be an asset when it comes to community policing and getting out there and just making, uh, continuing the already great marriage between this police department and the community. So therefore, it's now my, it's with great confidence that I present Officer Trayvon Perry to this town administration, our Board of Trustees, to the Monument Police Department family, and to the residents of the Town of Monument as he enters his new career as a police officer. And at this time, I'll now administer the oath. I state your name?
I, Trayvon Perry.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm?
Affirm.
That I will support and bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution?
Support and bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States of America?
And the laws of the United States of America.
And the state of Colorado?
State of Colorado.
And the ordinances of the Town of Monument?
And the ordinances of the Town of Monument.
And that I will protect the lives?
And I will protect the lives.
Safety?
Safety.
And the property?
And the property.
Of the people of Monument?
Of the people.
And that I will faithfully and impartially?
And faithfully.
Discharge the duties of the Office of Peace Officer?
Discharge the duties of the Office of Peace Officer.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I believe you will, sir. We now invite Trayvon's girlfriend, Morgan Buffmac, up. Oh, she's already here, as she will pin his badge on, uh, and, uh, I don't know if he's made you upset lately, but it's, uh, pretty sharp, so. I present Officer Trayvon. Mayor, board, again, thank you for the opportunity to present this final officer.
Thank you, Chief, and welcome, Officer Perry. Uh, it takes us to item 4A, Pike's Peak Rural Transit Authority, Mr. Williams.
Good evening. Um, my name's Wayne Williams. I serve on the Colorado Springs City Council and, uh, happy to present a little bit on the Pike's Peak Rural Transportation Authority this evening. And, uh, I've got a number of slides. I'm not gonna read them all to you. I know that disappoints several of you, um, but, uh, we'll just go through and, uh, I serve on the Colorado Springs City Council. I'm a board member of the Pike's Peak RTA. I also have the honor of being the commissioner that put it on the ballot in 2004, so I've been involved with it for a very long time. Uh, next slide, please. And as we proceed, now, there we go. So here's what I'm gonna talk about. I'm gonna talk about how the Pike's Peak RTA came to be created, what its implementation's like, briefly about the 2012 renewal, and then talk about what's currently going on. And then, uh, the reason I'm here is there's gonna be a ballot question to extend the RTA capital projects in 2022, and therefore to issue an invitation on behalf of the board, uh, to, for Monument to consider joining with us. So, next slide. The, uh, and yeah, scroll through all the things till we get all the little bubbles there. So I didn't realize when my friend created this for me, um, that each of these was separate. So, uh, first, this, the Pike's Peak RTA began with a process where a series of meetings took place. It then ultimately, uh, went through a large community process, and, uh, that's kind of detailed here on some of that. It showed up as the kickoff campaign in September 7th, and that takes us through all of this process. It was an important community effort, and next slide. And, uh, yeah, okay, let's, however many of these there are, I forgot that, uh, someone had done that, 'cause it ended that. There are a whole host of participants, yeah. Let's go back to there. These are some of the folks that were involved in the creation of the Pike's Peak RTA. They ranged the gamut from, uh, everyone in our community, included the Tri-Lakes Chamber amongst those that was part of the discussion. Next slide. Membership, uh, Pike's Peak RTA was formed under the Rural Transportation State Statute because the wisdom of the people in Denver is that anything outside Denver was rural. Doesn't matter that there are half a million people at the time here in the Pike's Peak Region and now almost 800,000, but we were deemed to be a Rural Transportation Authority because we were not in Denver. Originally, there were four member governments, El Paso County, City of Colorado Springs, City of Manitou Springs, and the Town of Green Mountain Falls. All the other six municipalities were extended in invitation, but the others chose not to participate. In part, for Monument, you were already a member of the Baptist Road RTA, uh, which was an RTA in conjunction with El Paso County, uh, that did a few minor things and then a massively major thing called the Baptist I-25 Interchange. Next slide. The governance, uh, some of you are familiar with how regional governance tends to work. We have a series of governments that come together, and, uh, I think Mayor Wilson currently serves as the Vice Chair of the Pike's Peak Regional Building Commission. And in that instance, it's a third, one of the members from El Paso County, one from Colorado Springs, and one from all the other entities combined. Uh, and so it's a third, a third, a third. And that doesn't exactly equal population, uh, but it still provides an opportunity for somewhat of a balance. The Pike's Peak RTA Board has a similar balance, but because we don't rotate or select individual town members, each of them has one member, and then the county and the city have enough, City of Colorado Springs, I should note, since Manitou Springs is also a city, um, I sometimes fall into that habit, so if I do, I, please forgive me, uh, that's what happens when you're on the Colorado Springs City Council. So in terms of that, it's, they're three of each, three commissioners, three Colorado Springs City Council members, and then a representative from Manitou, from Green Mountain Falls, and from Ramo. Uh, discussions are underway as to how to maintain this balance as others join, and, uh, there are two possible options for that. One is a weighted vote, where the county and city Colorado Springs, three representatives are casting 1.33 or 1.5, depending on the number of additional entities added, or just simply adding more commissioners and more Colorado Springs City Council members, but eventually we might outgrow the room, uh, and so we're looking at both of those options. But the plan is, uh, to maintain that third, a third, a third balance. Uh, next slide. Uh, Pike's Peak RTA went to the ballot in 2004. It is a 1% sales tax. Uh, .45% of it was continued, and that is, uh, .35 for maintenance, and that's allocated by population, and that goes on forever, and we just look at every 10 years. We update based on the census, and we say, this much came in, here's 35% of it, we divide it by population. Uh, the .10% goes to transit, uh, most of it to mountain metro, a little bit takes care of some specialized transit needs, uh, for those with disabilities or elderly, and then .55, or the bulk, the slight majority of it, goes to list of capital projects. Those are listed, they are allocated by population, and the member entities choose their own maintenance projects and they choose their own capital project. So no one else is telling you, you must put on County Line Road, or you must put on Baptist Road. You get to pick which things you wish to list, and I'll talk a little bit about some specifics in that in a minute. There are, those capital projects are allocated again by population. Uh, taxpayer protections that are there, first of all expenditures have to be approved both by the local government and by the Pike's Peak RTA Board, so it has to go through two steps. Uh, its administrative costs are limited to 1%. I will tell you that during the entire existence of the Pike's Peak RTA, we have never gotten close to 1%. We have always stayed significantly under that, uh, because it really is focused on simply being a paying authority so that member entities can accomplish their projects. Uh, there is a Citizens Advisory Committee that everything goes through, three from the Colorado Springs and El Paso County, two from each other member government, and five at large. The Pike's Peak RTA does not operate on debt. Uh, we operate on a cash basis, and so we do not bond, we do not borrow. Entities can defer some of their expenditures to allow someone to go forward, and that's typically what happens with the smaller governments, is the large government say, "Okay, Ramo, we'll let you take all couple hundred thousand and spend it all in one year", rather than dribs and drabs of, uh, paving, you know, eight feet each year, or whatever their numbers happen to work out to be. The Pike's Peak RTA does not exercise eminent domain. The decision was made specifically when we created it that that responsibility rests with the sponsoring government. And so if, as in the case of the Woodman Academy Interchange, which is one of the larger Pike's Peak RTA projects, some of the individuals objected, uh, it went through, uh, a court hearing, but it was the City of Colorado Springs that initiated the eminent domain because they were the sponsor of the project. And the reason for that is that so there is responsibility and accountability to the voters who choose them directly. Uh, did go on the, uh, November 2004 ballot. Next slide, please. And, uh, there were, at that time, 339,000 active and inactive voters, and it passed with 55% of the vote, projecting that at that time, 70 million of annual revenues coming in. Next. There were a number of factors that influenced why it was successful in passing. Those are listed there. Next slide. After it was implemented, um, after it was passed, it was then implemented, we chose to go through the Pike's Peak Area of Council Governments to serve as the administering agent so that we could keep administrative costs low. They were already, every member of the RTA was already part of the PPACG, and so they added a couple additional personnel, and you're familiar with at least one of them, uh, for those who've been around for a while, 'cause Rick Sonnenberg is the project manager, former town manager of the Town of Monument. So the PPACG handles that. I should note that when the Pike's Peak RTA pays a bill, it does not send the check to Monument. It sends it directly to the contractor. Uh, that's true for all of the entities. The advantage of that is that it is governed then by its own taper limits, uh, and it is exempt from the, uh, spending limits. So when sales tax goes up, which is fairly volatile, then it can collect and retain and spend all of that money, but it doesn't affect your taper limit at all. Next one, please. Uh, procurement processes, I'm just hitting a few things here. The local governments handle the procurement. The Pike's Peak RTA does not handle the procurement, and so you use whatever processes you use. If you use low cost, if you use design-build, if you do best value, it's up to you, uh, and then it does need to get approval ultimately by the board for the expenditures. There's a separate legal representation, there's a separate auditor, but it is mostly designed to support member governments and their projects. Next slide, please. So eight years later, we put the RTA on the ballot because the capital projects expire after 10 years, and we did it after eight years so that we didn't have to spend down a reserve, and so that we could prepare for the next round of projects. In El Paso County, which is a fairly conservative community, the renewal passed with 79.5% because we actually delivered on what we promised, and that's a pretty astronomical approval for a 10-year tax extension. And so you see the projections there for what it was gonna spend. Next slide, please. So 65 million was the first-year budget. The total amount at this point is, the estimated revenue of Countywide is 140 million. Uh, we have funded over 1.86 billion with a B dollars in projects in the Pike's Peak Area. Uh, every capital project in the category A, which are the first priority ones, were completed in Pike's Peak RTA 1, and Pike's Peak RTA 2, we're on track to do that, as well as potentially spend some additional money on some of the category B projects. Next slide, please. That's kind of a breakdown of some of those same numbers. Next. So despite Monument not being a member, you have benefited from the Pike's Peak RTA. Uh, here are about $88 million that have been spent, uh, as the El Paso County Commissioner for this area. One of the things I wanted to make sure is that some of the critical projects in this area took place. So, some of the larger ones, widening, I, widening Baptist Road, uh, and connecting Baptist to Hodgins, uh, the Struthers-Jackson Creek Extension. So much of the retail that is in Monument came in because of these Pike's Peak RTA projects that made it accessible. Uh, before this, some of you might remember, you had a beautiful four-lane Jackson Creek park, parkway, dead ending in a two-lane Baptist Road. And if that made sense, I'm not sure who thought it did. Uh, there are other projects there, some of them are underway now. Uh, beacon. And I should note that for some of these, there was additional money, because this is the RTA component. It does not include things that a developer paid. So Jennifer Irvine tells me that a couple of these have either anywhere from 2 to 5 million in additional funds from a developer contribution as part of a land use approval. And she also tells me that when Highway 105 east of I-25 is finished, the total cost will be significantly over the 18.3 million, uh, but this was the budgeted amount a decade ago. It also, I should note, that, uh, it served Pike's Peak RTA, it served it as a match for the InfraGrant, so when you see the Pike's, the Gap project taking place, uh, that is in part funded through the Pike's Peak RTA, would not have taken place without it. Uh, but they've also done some of the companion projects, the 11.7 million for Monument Hill Road, and then to help out with Lewis Palmer's Middle School, another couple million there. Some of these are outside the city limits, uh, but they had a direct impact on retail in, uh, Monument, so that's why I've listed them on here. Next slide, please. So a little bit about what the current budget does. So we have a little bit of interest being earned, not much, 'cause of low interest rates. Uh, we pay the state to collect our sales tax for us, just like you do, uh, and then our administrative costs this year budgeted at 766,000. Uh, it could be 1.4 million, so that tells you just how much lower we are, uh, than the 1% cap that's there. And then because of an increase in revenue, we also had to increase the accompanying taper reserve. And when you see net revenue excluding Fairbox revenue, that's because, uh, the transit funding directly funds some bus routes, but they also get some Fairbox revenue. Next slide, please. So here's how it breaks out for, um, transit, maintenance, and capital. And so about 75 million in capital projects this year, and you see the various allocations, uh, and they range significantly in amount from Colorado Springs, uh, receiving $33,000, $33 million in maintenance to Ramo, yes, at $10,000, because the 123 people in Ramo, uh, when you allocate by population, don't get quite as much. Next slide, please. And so this, this, the reason I put a little extra detail on this one, this is the capital allocation of 75 million. And, uh, if you look under the smaller municipalities, you'll see the projects they have in that category A. And so Ramo is simply a street overlay program. That's their capital project. Uh, they get 15,000 a year for it, but County and City agreed that they could go ahead and spend all of the 150,000 at once, and so they did. Uh, Manitou, West End pedestrian and drainage improvements, so covering a variety of things. Another one is a transit shuttle and, uh, surface or structure, parking structure that they had. Green Mountain Falls is addressing some drainage, drainage issues and widening Belvedere Avenue. To the best of my knowledge, I've never been on Belvedere Avenue, but that's what Green Mountain Falls chose, and so that's what's on the list. But it kind of gives you a variety of the projects that are there. Uh, next slide, please. So that brings us to Pike's Peak RTA 3, and the reason I'm here. We plan for a ballot issue in November of 2022 with funding and taxation to begin in January 2025. Uh, you may say, why is this two years in advance of when you could possibly do it? And there are a couple reasons for that. First, we did the first renewal two years ahead of time. This gives us the ability to plan ahead, to start design, in some cases right-of-way acquisition, which is necessary. And, uh, also makes it so you don't have to spend down a taper reserve or other things. Uh, we have extended invitations to the non-member governments in the Pike's Peak Area. Uh, Callahan has passed a resolution desiring to join and plans for November 2022. A vote plan for this November, uh, so 2021, I have a typo there, uh, and they're proceeding with that. Fountain's declined, and we're now in discussions with you and with Palmer Lake. That's kind of where we are, just to kind of say here. Could a government join at any point? The answer is yes, but the capitalist is set every 10 years. So it wouldn't make any sense at all, I don't think, to join the year after the capitalist got set, because you'd be, your residents would be paying the tax, and you wouldn't be getting all the benefit. You'd be getting the 35% for maintenance, but not the 55% for capital. And so, uh, you, as a board, have to make a decision whether you wish to join, and then you'd need to refer it to the citizens, uh, either in November of 2021 or April of 2022. It's my understanding that you've already notified the clerk and recorder that you desire to be on the ballot this November. One of the nice things about the way the clerk runs, uh, elections is once you're on, you don't pay extra to stick an extra question on the ballot. So it's essentially a year in which you could add an additional one for free. Uh, the tax, uh, as I mentioned, begins in January 2025, although you could join for maintenance earlier. Next slide, please. So why did we create the RTA? In part because it's a regional process. I seriously doubt that even you, as members of the trustees, stop when you hit a sign that says County Maintained Road and said, "I will not drive on this road." For most of us, we have no idea who maintains the road we drive on. We don't know whether Baptist is in the Town of Monument or in El Paso County Road. We just drive it without concern. Uh, this graphic actually shows that not only do we drive that, we also leave the Town of Monument on a regular basis. This is not a surprise to anybody here, but, uh, several thousand of your members of this town leave every day to go to work, and a couple thousand people come into your town every day to go to work, and it's a regional network, and that's all that slide shows. Next slide, please. One of the questions that arose is what happens when a non-member entity annexes land? And Monument has done that, as has Fountain, as have others. If you go down to South Academy and I-25, you will see a beautiful, brand-new Walmart and Sam's Club located there. Uh, that area somehow is in the Town of Fa, City of Fountain, that stuck a little flagpole up I-25 and annexed this commercial area in a deal with the developer there. And, uh, and so Walmart said, "Why am I paying Pike's Peak RTA's sales tax?" I should note, by the way, the Pike's Peak RTA built the bridges on Academy Boulevard. Some of you recall there was only a bridge on one direction there, uh, and the south bridges were built and the road was widened. But Walmart sued, saying, "We shouldn't be paying this RTA's sales tax. We're now in the, we're no longer in the unincorporated El Paso County." And the U.S., or the Colorado Court of Appeals said, "The relevant municipal boundaries are those that exist, and that on the date the authority is created, and we thus conclude, although Fountain's annexation of the property removed it from the unincorporated El Paso County, that annexation did not remove the property from the boundaries of the authority." Even though Fountain had also argued, "Well, we're home rules, so we get to trump all this," and the Court of Appeals said, "No," and the Supreme Court upheld the decision by denying cert. Why is this relevant? Next slide, please. Because you've got five businesses and about 757 homes that are already paying Pike's Peak RTA sales tax. Because at the time the Pike's Peak RTA was created, the southeast corner of Baptist and Struthers/Jackson Creek was an unincorporated El Paso County. And so the motel there, the bank, I think it's a Walgreens, um, whatever, there's about five businesses there, they're paying. And then I think it's Sanctuary in the Pines and that other eastern one along 105. Uh, all of those residents are paying Pike's Peak RTA sales tax for deliveries to their home. Uh, and if they, anyone who goes to the businesses in that southeast corner there is also paying Pike's Peak RTA sales taxes, and that will continue, uh, as long as there is a Pike's Peak RTA. That is also true- That is also true. If you choose to annex along Beacon Light, once the county comes along and paves it. Uh, a project that has been underway since I was a commissioner, but is finally taking place shortly. Uh, and so part of this discussion isn't just what is the situation now, but it's also what is the situation in the future? And as Monument makes the decision, if you choose to do that, to annex surrounding areas, um, they, they will continue to pay that one percent tax to the R T A. And the question is whether you should be able to claim those maintenance dollars that come along with it and whether you should have a voice, a direct voice and how uh, those dollars are spent. Uh, next slide please. Uh, the estimates we've gotten, I think for Mike are that a one cent sales tax generates about three million dollars in Monument. Uh, I don't know how to account for seven hundred and fifty seven homes and five businesses. So I'm ballparking it based on some estimates we did that probably about two point eight million additional should Monument choose to join the Pike's Peak R T A. Uh, and that's because some of those businesses and homes are already paying sales tax. Uh, using that revenue and our estimate of, which I think we also got from Monument, about nine thousand people compared to a membership population of six, eight, nine, two fifty eight. That would give Monument about one point three percent of the population of the R T A. And so when we allocate things each year, you would be receiving six hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars for maintenance and just over a million for capital. Um, we are, as I mentioned, pretty flexible about how that takes place and how you spend that money. Uh, membership on the board, um, and you have the opportunity to advocate then for allocating projects. And a lot of times there's a joint project. So the county and the city jointly did Colorado Boulevard over near Manitou. County and the city are currently jointly doing Black Forest Road. And so you also have the opportunity to partner with others in that. Uh, I should note that to the extent you say, well, we are a net sales tax contributor. Uh, so by the way, is the city of Colorado Springs. Uh, El Paso County is the one that actually benefits. Well, Green Mountain Falls gets twenty six thousand bucks. Uh, but El Paso County gets almost another million a year. And so I am sure, having talked with Jennifer Irvine and oddly enough, your commissioner, uh, at least one of the two that represents this area that there is some willingness to allocate additional county projects that would also benefit uh, Monument in this process. Next slide please. So that takes us to the next steps. The Monument trustees have to decide if they wish to pursue joining the Pike's Peak R T A for Pike's Peak R T A three. If so, there's a couple of things that have to take place. You would have to develop a list of capital projects, including the estimated cost. Uh, you would have approximately, you know, as you budget, eleven million bucks, give or take, uh, to be looking at um, at a million a year. Uh, but again, you don't have to do it in dribs and drabs. County and the city have both been very supportive of member governments going forward with their projects all at one time, if appropriate. Um, you'd also need to figure out how much it would cost. And I should note that these projects can be combined with matching funds. So if you required a developer to pay a certain amount towards Higbee or some other issue and you want to match that uh, or extend Jackson Creek northward. Uh, there are various things that you can do in that process. Uh, you generate your own list of projects and as long as it meets the intent of the R T A and stays within budget, others very little pushback. I would note uh, the individual that manages this list of projects for the city of Colorado Springs is also known to the town of Monument because that's Travis Easton, your former mayor. Uh, both he and Jennifer Irvine with the county provide significant assistance for our member governments. Because quite frankly, the town of Rema does not have a personnel. So we handle virtually every part of their project for them. Uh, and we've also provided significant support from both management and Green Mountain Falls. Uh, so happy to assist in that process. Next slide. So that is, I know I didn't read all the slides to you. Please didn't break any hearts. Um, but we're at that stage now where you get to ask me questions or provide comments or just wait till later. But I would say if you want to be on, if you want to go to this ballot, uh, then you've notified the clerk already. You want to participate, but you have to provide specific ballot language by about the end of August. And uh, we've got counsel that's happy to work with uh, Mr. Ritchie and uh, your clerk in terms of coming forward with uh, ballot language that might be appropriate. And again, it simply provides the voters with a choice as to whether they wish to do that. Uh, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions from the board?
Yeah. First question I have, uh, is this not a countywide initiative or does it have to be done? Is it being done city by city? Or how's that? Why are we the ones that are doing the referendum as opposed to El Paso County? Or how does that work out?
Thank you. Uh, so the renewal of the Pike's Peak R T A will be a county, will be a mostly countywide. So every R T A vote, both the initial creation and uh, the renewal was put on the ballot by the first was put on by the El Paso County, the second was put on by Pike's Peak R T A, but the individuals, the citizens who lived within non-member governments were not sent a ballot and did not vote on the issue. And so at the present time, the membership of the Pike's Park Pike's Peak R T A, if there are seven hundred and fifty thousand people in El Paso County, membership is about seven hundred and twenty thousand. Monument, Monument and Fountain and a couple of very small jurisdictions are not in that. Um, so what you would have to put on the ballot is, should we join the Pike's Peak R T A? And then, so that's the question that would be asked there. And then the renewal question in which Monument would be a part of that would take place in November twenty twenty two, there would be no cost for Monument. The Pike's Peak R T A would then cover that cost. But we need to know whether you want to be on it because that will shape the ballot language. Uh, will there be um, I would presume Monument has capital projects that could be have money spent on them. Uh, and I don't know what those are. Not my job to tell you what they are. Uh, but they, those would be incorporated into the November twenty twenty two ballot. Uh, but the question you need to ask either this fall or next April is, do you want to be part of it? So there's two votes. One would be yes, make us a part of it. And the other would be folks, do you want to renew this and do these capital projects?
So to the renewal is is that per entity also?
No. Once once Pike's Peak R T A, so I get a little bit of echo. It's the joy of Zoom and other processes. Uh, once the Pike's back, once the Pike's Peak R T A, um, once you're a member of the R T A, it is a R T A wide vote and the renewal is determined by the overall vote. And so we do not go in and say if Rema failed to vote to renew, then Rema's out. It's a all or nothing.
So so the tax is perpetual as long as it's renewed. So it has to be a vote. So if Monument no longer wants to be in it, say all our, we just redid all our roads. And the people are Monument are like, okay, why would I keep paying this tax when we're only getting, what is it? Thirty five percent for maintenance?
And fifty five percent for capital.
But if we had no capital projects, that's, I mean, of course we always will, but not pressing or they just didn't want to vote for it. There is a, it's their vote is put against Colorado Springs and and everybody else involved in the county for a whether or not they're in or or not.
There's two aspects of it. One is does the board choose to put it on the ballot? Does the Pike's Peak R T A board choose to put it on the ballot? And Monument would have a share of that one third votes allocated to the municipality. So you'd have that. And then there is a vote and all votes are accrued and count the same, whether you're Monument or Colorado Springs. Having said that, there is a process for an entity to be released from the Pike's Peak R T A. Uh, the Court of Appeals refers to that in the Walmart case. And where an entity says, I no longer wish to participate at all. We've never had that. Uh, but if they did, it would be then resolved to the Pike's Peak R T A board. And there is a process in place to address that. So it's, you're not. It's not the Hotel California where you can check out but never leave. Uh, but there is a process that has to be followed. Um, having said that, I've never seen anyone have any desire to leave because the number of capital projects necessary. And remember, part of what you can do is you can do what Rema did, which is resurfacing. So I guess if you get to the point where we're all using hovercraft or some other method that doesn't burden the roads, then we could make the decision to dissolve it or alter it significantly. And you might recall that we did that when the Baptist R T A got the money back from the city of, state of Colorado. The decision was made to dissolve the Baptist Road R T A. And uh, those that were paying that one percent sales tax, uh, which again, one of the reasons why uh, Monument didn't join initially is because this overlap with the Baptist Road R T A and that overlap still existed when we renewed it last time. This is really the first time you're in a position where you don't already have an R T A where the people are paying that sales tax and most of your large retailers are in it.
So you're saying despite your portion of that you get for maintenance, you could also, if all your major projects are finished, you could list maintenance as your capital projects.
It's what Rema did, pavement overlay. I, and and if you look at the others, I'm not sure how you'd account drainage and sidewalk improvements. The city of Colorado Springs has a programmatic one for school and sidewalk safety programs. Uh, where we weren't sure which schools would need that assistance of adding sidewalks or crossing uh, methods or ADA compliance with, so there's a whole host of things and it's really flexible, which is why the member governments like it and it accomplishes what it's supposed to, which is why seventy nine point five percent of the citizens said, yeah, let's keep it up.
Okay. And then you mentioned it being effective November twenty two, but we would have to put it on the ballot in November twenty one or April of twenty two.
Correct.
What's the significance of April twenty two?
Uh, there's municipal elections that can take place then.
So we move, we moved ours.
And I'm not sure whether that was an, that's just, this is the general rule. It's what we're telling all the municipalities. I'm aware that you moved yours to consolidate with the clerk.
Hmm.
Um, which I think makes a lot of sense. Um,
So does that, does that hurt us? If we wouldn't be able to go to the ballot till November twenty two?
So it is theoretically possible for us to craft a ballot issue. It just complicates it. Because then you would be having on there, shall Monument be? Your voters would be, I shall Monument join. And then we'd have to phrase the larger ballot issue of if Monument joins, should the following ones be added to the capital project list and our attorney being cautious would prefer that those, those decisions be made ahead of time. Um, is it possible to do? Yes. Um, is it simple? It's simpler if you made that decision ahead of time as to whether you wish to join. Okay, so.
Additional questions from the board?
I just have one question. So does it matter if the area that needs to be maintained, say overlays, et cetera, is within the town, but in a metro district?
No. I mean, the, the town can say because some of these others are, um, we have uh, a lot of the city of Colorado Springs is in various metro districts. And so um, if you're dealing with tri view and you say, hey, tri view, we will address this or tri view will match X amount and the town will use some town funds and then we'll use some Pike's Peak R T A funds. And you can put it together in whatever makes the best project uh, that works for you. We write the check from the Pike's Peak R T A directly to the contractor who did the work and you tell us who you want it to go to. Uh, in terms of how you structure it with the metro district, that is up to you. And uh, the town of Monument has more experience dealing with that issue than most other entities.
Okay.
But I have a comment, please.
Go ahead.
Mr. Williams, thank you so much for this comprehensive, flexible plan. It's highly admirable. And I appreciate the vast broad brush of flexibility in it.
You're welcome. That is, this really was designed to be flexible for all the member governments because we certainly didn't know and didn't want the Pike's Peak R T A to be dictating. And so there are entities, I mean, we've done intersections with it like uh, Union and Austin Bluffs and Academy and Woodman. Uh, we've done intersection improvements. We've done widening. We've done construction of roads. We've done maintenance. We've done curb and gutter. So we we want to make it so whatever.
Is there, is there, is there a possibility to include in the future uh, and actually com- commercial bus line or system such as that transit system within the town? Would that be something that could be included in this heading?
Yes. So the city of Colorado Springs last issue, the, the Pike's Peak R T A two includes some capital transit projects for the city of Colorado Springs. So if it was Monument buys uh, two ADA accessible buses, that could be a capital project that you list in there. Uh, so there is again, some flexibility in, in how you address it.
That's perfect. Thank you so much, Mr. Williams. I do appreciate your hard work and fore- forethought and foresight in developing this plan.
Thank, thank you.
So just to clarify, the cost would be an additional one percent sales tax in Monument.
For some of your residents, Jim, or trustee, or however we're supposed to address one another, um, seven hundred and fifty seven of your households are already paying this. So for them, there's no additional cost. They actually get some benefit for it. Uh, for the other households, uh, there would be an additional one cent sales tax. And for the Walmart and the Home Depot and the Coles, there would be an additional sales tax, most of which or at least a lot of which is paid for by your neighbors and Woodmore and Lynn Eagle. Uh, but yeah, it's a one cent sales tax and uh, but again, only if the voters say yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thanks. If you have questions that develop later on, my contact information, both my email and my cell are there. And uh, we're also, if your professional staff wants to meet with either Jennifer Ivy, who is Pike's Peak R T A's board attorney or with uh, our engineering people at the city, Travis Easton or Jennifer Irvine over at the county, we're happy to make that happen. And I wish you uh, the best as you consider what to do going forward. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Hogan, can you share the slideshow with the board members in case they want to review it?
Yes, it's also been posted to the website, the town website as well.
Is that good for board members if you want more of it? Okay. So Ms. Hogan, you don't need to share that with the board members if it's on the website. Oh, okay. Okay, moving on, that takes us to five A and ordinance, uh, ordinance number twenty seven, twenty twenty one. Uh, local sales tax funding source for Monument Police. Mr. Ritchie.
Thank you, Mayor Trustees. Uh, the Monument Police Department has requested the Board of Trustees consider referring a ballot issue to the November ballot. The revenue raised by the passage of the ballot issue would be used to exclusively fund Monument Police and enhance Monument Police Services. The police department has provided the trustees with the presentations describing the desired uses for the funds generated by the sales tax initiative. And they are also listed in the draft uh, ballot initiative uh, language. Um, the ballot issue as drafted, uh, if passed by the voters would raise the sales tax by one half of one percent, increasing the sales tax, town sales tax from three percent to three point five percent, apparently in areas outside of the R T A. Um, the town will calculate that to, that increase to the sales and used, um, we, the town calculates that this half percent sales tax will raise one point six five million dollars annually. Um, it has been estimated that each one hundred of a percent would generate approximately thirty three thousand dollars annually. Um, so again, proposed use, specific uses of the sales tax are outlined in the ballot language. Uh, the hiring, training and employment of eight more police officers to reduce call times, overdue maintenance and replacement patrol cars in the department fleet, the hiring of a detective to handle sensitive issues like sexual assault and criminal case follow-up on larger investigations, a unit of special enforcement officers focus. a unit of special enforcement officers focused on commenting vehicle break-ins, drug dealing and essential burglaries and human trafficking, and the replacement of essential public safety equipment and revision of enhanced police services. These have been determined to be the, the critical needs of the Monument Police Department and those which town voters have indicated support through the community survey. Uh, the staff recommends approval of ordinance 27, 2021.
This is a public hearing item, so I will open it up to the public for anyone who would like to speak on this item. Mr. Anderson, do we have anybody online that would like to speak to this item? Okay. And if there's nobody present that would like to speak on this item, we will bring it back to the board for further discussion or questions. Trustee Stevens.
Yes, um, we just had this, uh, something similar to the, uh, this initiative just last November. So I guess my question is, what is the difference between the current, uh, request for, um, the current ordinance request versus the one that went on the ballot that was rejected last November?
Probably let our chief talk about that. He can, uh, give you some more information on why we're coming back to you with this.
Uh, just for clarification, trustee Stevens, uh, as far as usage or as far as why we're putting it back out again?
No, I think I understand the need and the need is there, but, uh, my concern is, uh, what is different from, the voters rejected it last time. So what gives them the incentive to say, okay, this time it's different and it's, uh, you know, I know there's, uh, the tax, uh, let's see, the school board, how shall I say, the, the school board has offered, you know, perpet, you know, continual tax requests, and I don't want us to get in the same situation where every time there's a vote, now there's the town of Monument coming up with another tax request when we already told them last time that it's not going, you know, that we didn't want it. So I guess my question is, why would someone vote for this this time as opposed to not voting for it last time?
Yeah, that's, that's completely understandable, sir. So I think, um, uh, the town manager, myself, the mayor, um, various council members or some sorry trustees, we've attended, uh, more outreach in the community since last November. Uh, one thing we heard is, um, we didn't know if the money would go solely to the police department. Another thing we heard is there was some confusion in the language when it went out to vote. Another thing we heard quite frequently is, um, we just weren't educated or it just showed up on the ballot. And, and when, when the manager and myself, we evaluated, um, you know, how much we marketed this, uh, we then immediately began working with, uh, Madeline, uh, to bring in a consultant firm to run a survey. The survey served two parts, kind of to, to look at where the community felt the need was right now. And then to add an educational component to the survey, which really broke down just how primitive this police department is. Kind of broke down what the money would be used for, uh, and educated people. So when we looked at the beginning of the survey and we got a cold response from the, um, respondents as to, uh, as far as would they support certain things for, uh, the police department? Uh, the, the numbers were much lower than when we went back and we said, you know, understanding that sometimes you only have one or two police officers on the road, uh, with an average experience of less than one year in many cases and no supervisor, would you then be more, you know, willing to support this tax? And I think what, what we really failed to do last year is truly educate the community. Um, you know, there was one issue committee, you know, I, I will take responsibility in the fact that, you know, I didn't, uh, get out and meet with the issue committee ahead of time. We've since done that. Uh, we've run probably, uh, Mr. Forman, I, I think five or seven, uh, community engagement meetings. Uh, we, we actually sat down with the, uh, the chamber of commerce this time because we really felt that if anybody would feel the impact, it would be our businesses. Um, and they were, they were completely supportive. So I, I think the educational component as far as how the money will be used. There, there were some questions that I've heard out in the community with the sunset. Uh, many people think that, um, there's no need to let it sunset. Other people ask why. Um, I could tell you first and foremost, um, my response to the community when, when asked that question is, you know, based on accredited practices, based on the geographic size of our, of our jurisdiction, based on our inability to, to handle proactive type crimes and some types of, uh, uh, enforcement scenarios. We, we felt that the one point, then the 1.3 to 4 million would take us right to where we needed to be now, based on industry standards, uh, to make it safer for the police officers, uh, a better scenario to retain and, uh, recruit police officers. We know how important that is right now. Uh, but we also felt that as potential future growth, uh, increased on a sliding scale, the two axes would kind of mirror each other. So this would get us to where we need to be now, but the continuation of the set sales tax and future property and, uh, growth and sales tax would continue us with the, uh, anticipated growth in Monument. So I think that's what's different between now and then. Um, we've had to change some of the usages from the initial proposal, uh, based on some unfunded state mandates. Uh, you know, every time we stop an individual now, um, we have to, uh, we have to capture their demographical data. Um, you know, so we're just doing that on paper now. And, you know, we have a stack of paper a foot tall of each person we stop in, in, you know, what their demographic that is. Um, every officer will be required to wear a body cam, um, including myself, you know, if I'm going to be out taking police action, uh, de-escalation training. Uh, you know, there's some pending legislation that, you know, we've been fighting pretty heavily at the Chiefs Association. Uh, they really, uh, they presented some legislation that, you know, Denver's basically trying to tell Monument how to police this community. Um, you know, they're trying to tell us when somebody should be incarcerated and when they're not. So I can tell you first and foremost, if this bill that I think we, we stalled now, if it comes back again, there will be several offenses that we may not be able to arrest people on. Uh, an officer just, you know, case in point, driving in the community 2am stops a car, but personally has a suspended license and a stolen tag on the vehicle. Denver's trying to say that person doesn't deserve to be going to jail. You know, my officer knows that person's out doing car break-ins or looking in garages. There's a reason he's taken to jail. I mean, nobody wants to put somebody in jail. Uh, some, some issues pending, uh, where, uh, you know, there may be some money, uh, uh, some bond without, without, uh, funding so that everybody has an equal bond opportunity. You know, so we're really facing some challenges. We're facing some recruitment challenges. We're facing some legislation challenges. Um, so I really think this will take us where we need to be. And I think we've done a pretty good job, um, educating the community to date, um, since last year. And I think our next, uh, strategy is to take the survey and really, um, you know, work with, work with the issue committee and getting the right people on it so they can get out and really spread the word a little more. Uh, when, when we did the math, and I'll wrap it up on this, when we did the math, I think it lost by just 700 and something votes. And, you know, if you, if you take the total number of votes and divide it by two, um, you know, that's just shy of 350 people that we need to reach to, to send this thing home. So I think we're pretty close. Yes, sir.
Question, as you mentioned, um, one issue last time was the ballot language, and now I think we've made it longer.
So this was, um, this ballot language was worked with our consultant to be as clear as we could make it. Length is one thing. I think what we were really truly going for here is clarity so that the voters clearly understand, based upon some of the questions that I think the chief talked about, of are we certain this is going just to police, uh, police services? And so we wanted to make it clear, um, as it sits. And unfortunately, taper requires a lot of different things to go on a ballot initiative.
Does it, in line, uh, it's either line 10 or 11, does it require that the, or any other law as it currently exists? My understanding is if this was in contradiction to any other law, we wouldn't be doing it.
I, I believe this is a reference to, uh, well, this is, I should say, a reference to any other fiscal law related to how, uh, the spending of our resources that we could exempt it from. And so it is a catchall to exempt it from anything that Denver may have put, uh, on, may, may put on the books or have put on the books.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Will there be any further educational, uh, initiatives to, between now and the election to further educate the people of the town on this?
Yes. So in working with Mr. Ritchie, we, um, you know, we created our, 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 what was the issue formerly known as 2E, we created our fact sheet, we got that out. Um, so moving forward, um, Vice Mayor Protem, what we'll have to do is stick to factual data only. Um, you know, hey, this is, uh, here's a breakdown of our officers. They all have less than a year of experience. I cannot staff midnight with a supervisor. That's a fact. So, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, I can speak factual. I just have to keep my opinion to myself and the officers would have to keep their opinions to their selves. But then once the issue committees form, I think we'd be able to educate the issue committee on facts. And I think we've reached out to enough people already in the community that they would be able to really just send it home with anything other than factual. But why this is certainly a good thing for Monument. Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions from the board? At this time, we'll consider the public hearing portion closed and we will look for a motion from the board.
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 27 dash 2021 and ordinance of the Board of Trustees of the Town of Monument, Colorado, referring a ballot issue to the registered electors of the Town of Monument at, at the November 2nd, 2021, coordinated election regarding increasing the local sales tax from 3% to 3.5% to create a dedicated and exclusive funding source for Monument Police and enhanced Monument Police Services.
Second.
Ms. Hogan, will you take role, please?
Trustee Anru? Yes. Trustee Lakind?
Yes.
Trustee Romanella?
Yes.
Trustee Stevens?
This hasn't changed enough since last time, so I'm going to vote no.
Trustee Clark?
No.
Mayor Protem Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
No. Were we missing somebody? Did she get you? Oh, maybe I missed someone. That motion passes 4-3. Next item on the agenda, ordinance number 5B. Ordinance, uh, initiating the adoption of home rule charter. Mr. Ritchie.
Thank you, Mayor and Trustees. The board has been recently researching the pros and cons of switching monuments form of local government from statutory rule to home rule. In order to align the home rule election process to El Paso County's coordinated election calendar, home rule must be initiated via ordinance at this particular BOT meeting. Uh, home rule could be initiated at another time, but it would require at least one special election, if not done this evening. What ordinance 21, 28, 2021 initiates the process of adopting a home rule form of government through calling for the, through the calling of an election to form a charter commission and to elect members to of the charter commission? Uh, the elected charter commission, if voters approve the formation, will draft a charter for the town. The proposed charter will be sent back to the Board of Trustees for referral to the voters for an up or down vote. Um, the expectation is that this would, they would do that in about six months. And then we would send this back again in next November. In order to hold the home rule charter commission election and the up and down vote on the proposed charter, uh, without holding a special election, the town must comply with the election participation requirements of CRS, section 1, 7, uh, 116, and the legally prescribed timetable for the notice of election and the collection of ballot nominating signatures by potential charter commission members. These two separate timetables require the passage to the home rule ordinance at this BOT meeting if you wish to avoid a, a special election. Um, and you wish to hold, and you wish to, uh, be able to hold both the charter commission election and any election related to the adoption of the home rule charter that's proposed in 2021 and then 2022. Uh, recommendation from staff is the staff recommends passage of the ordinance initiating the adoption of home rule charter for the Town of Monument.
Okay. This also is a public hearing item. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak for or against this item? Mr. Anderson, do we have anyone online that would like to speak for or against this item? Okay. Bring it back to the board for, uh, questions, comments? Uh, yeah, on the police, uh, you had it very clear with the appendix, uh, the actual ballot language there, and I'm reading through this. Do you, I don't see that at the end of this one where there's clearly how you're going to state it on the ballot.
Uh, in, in the, uh, thank you, thank you for that question that has come up. Um, on page two of the ordinance, under the now therefore, section one, it will, the election note, the election question will be, shall the Town of Monument form a home rule charter commission? That is the only question that must legally be asked. And then by operation of law, the language will be, please select so many charter commission members from those, from the number that we, we have that sign up. So that, that language comes later and happens by operation of law.
So during that election or during the November election, they say, yes, uh, shall we, uh, you know, proceed with the home rule, however you said it. But there's also a list of people that they will choose as the electors. That's not a separate election.
That is not a separate election. It will be on the same ballot. So they will add.
People get on to the ballot, on to the ballot process.
So that is more of a Laura Hogan questions, because she's been running that and has a lot of that documentation ready to go.
So if you choose to refer the question to the ballot, you'll, there'll be the question that Andy just spoke of, of whether or not a charter commission will be formed. If that question passes, there, you'll, voters will see both questions. They'll see that one if they want to vote yes or no on whether the charter commission will be formed. But there will also be a list of candidates. And though, should you choose to refer this question today, a nomination petition process will be implemented. And it will, uh, it's not real specific in the home rule, um, statutes as to how to do it. It just says to do it as close as practical as you can to how you normally nominate like a trustees. So, um, I've developed, you know, a timeframe and I've already developed nomination petitions and will publicize the fact that we have this, um, that we'll be accepting, uh, petitions, self-nominating petitions for the charter election. And, um, though, and all those candidates who want to be on the ballot will, as long as they meet the minimum qualifications and have enough, um, signatures, they will be listed on, on the ballot just as, as same process you guys went through when you were trustees.
Okay, thank you.
This is kind of a big deal, switching to home rules. So, um, I want to ask, uh, to your point, Ms. Hogan, how will the charter election be publicized? And maybe that involves Maryland.
Well, um, I'm required to post two public notices of, and it's very specific about when I'm supposed to put it in and what's supposed to go in those notices. But so the, the nomination petition timeframe will be put in the Tri-Lakes Tribune. Um, we'll also obviously put that up on our website. Um, and I'm required to do one notice, um, when you guys refer the question. And then a second notice as soon as we know who the candidates, um, will be that are on the ballot. So, uh, people will be aware of, of, of the process if they're reading, uh, public notice in the newspaper. Um, and it'll be on our website. And I guess other than that, if people want to go above and beyond, I would probably forward that question on to Madeline because she does town communications. I'm sure it will be in our, uh, any kind of avenue that we have to, to publicize that in the timeframe that we have.
Okay, thank you. How about the, just in general, educating people on the difference between home rule and a statutory town?
We've, uh, similar to what the police chief said. We've done several meetings of, uh, where we've had meetings with the public where we've educated them on the difference. And we also have, uh, done a, um, now loss of words here. I've, uh, we did a, uh, survey. We did a survey with the community and got results from that. And then also just recently, we sent out in everybody's mail, a, um, educational piece on the difference between uh, statutory towns and home rule and the benefits of home. Now after this, uh, if you refer to the ballot now, we'll stop doing that. And then just like with the police issue, an issue committee could be formed to further educate the community.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Did we, um, determine, I, I know we talked about number, did we determine nine? Did we determine how many we're going to elect? Are we still going to discuss that?
It is drafted as nine right now.
The draft is nine. That's what I thought. Um, so I was kind of confirming that. And then I know that we.
Could choose between nine and 21. Is that true?
I'm sorry?
You could choose between nine and 21.
Right, but it's.
Right, but as, with the, with the timeline of this right now, I, I think we should have that pretty well decided in the very near future.
Yeah, is there a reason that nine was put in there?
Nine appears to be the standard that others have gone on, like Castle Pines.
But what did our board say about that?
I mean, I, we put in nine-
I would like 12.
It's got to be an odd number.
It would need to be odd, yes.
The board has the opportunity to decide on that number tonight. You could change the ordinance, as it's written.
As it's stated right now, it's nine. Okay. Now, I understand that, I was, I-
Yes, please.
Okay, so, um, I know that we can't influence the charter, but as far as like, the, the, how you're going about petitioning and all that, can we chime in on that process of getting all this to ballot? Mr. Ricci, I guess, is a question for.
So you may absolutely go out and look for individuals who you could encourage to be on this charter commission. That is absolutely a possibility. What, what sort of things are we talking about?
No, I'm asking about the process. Are, are we able to chime in on the process of?
Oh, of forming the charter?
Right. No, 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 not of forming the charter, of, of getting, of getting the petition, of how we're going to get petitions in, what the process of that is, and et cetera. Or no? Are we just leaving that to Laura? Is that what we're doing?
Well, you're not necessarily leaving it to me. I'm doing it as close as practical to how it is specified in your normal, regular elections.
You're just following how it would be for us, for example?
Identically.
Okay.
The law, like when we have normal officer elections, nomination petition period is 91 to 71 days before the election, which I'm following that exactly. I'm following exactly the same number of days that you would have to amend the signatures. The requirements are outlined specifically in law, which is basically a Town of Monument resident. It doesn't have anything to, there's no 12-month residency requirement prior to you being a resident. It's literally outlined in the law that you have to be a Monument resident and a registered voter, and you have to get 25 signatures. So I'm just following as closely as I can to what state statute requires and mimicking our nomination petition process that we've always used.
So then, I would just like to state to everybody in Monument land, out there, on camera and here, that the quality of the Constitution Charter you're going to get is the quality of the nine people that you vote on. And I think this is going to be probably one of the most extremely important things that's ever been voted for here. So I would just take that very seriously to anybody listening or watching this.
And I would like to encourage us to change that number to, from nine to 15, or 14, or 13, whatever the odd number is.
So we've had several board retreats where this topic has come up, where we've had people come in and discuss with us. For those in attendance, the number nine seems sufficient at the time. I see no reason why we should go through the process of changing it now.
Think that I would appreciate some consideration in that input. Thank you.
I think my concern is the number of people that are going to be aware of this and willing to participate. I would be thrilled to get nine.
That's a great, that's a great question. What happens if nine people do not sign up?
Then we appoint.
Okay. The board gets to appoint the remaining vacancies.
Only six people, we appoint three.
True.
That's why I would like to increase the number.
Increasing the number will not increase the number of those that apply. If five apply, five apply, whether it's nine or 13.
Right, but you're assuming that we are not going to get enough, and I think we'll have an overabundance of people who will be interested and not have the opportunity because the number is so low.
Ms. Hogan, do we, do you recall how many candidates we had at our last election for trustee positions?
Don't quote me, but I believe it was six.
Six out of three seats?
Correct.
I think for the, Mr. Williams mentioned 9,000 people. I thought our voting population was closer to 12. Am I off on that? You would know.
At the last election, we sent out 12,000 ballots, so that would be obviously more than 12,000 registered electors live in the Town of Monument. So our, I wish our census data was in, but.
Mr. Foreman, do you recall, and I'm not holding you to this, because this isn't something that you should know off the top of your hand, but when we did have a retreat and spoke with the former or present town manager of Castle Pines, what's their population? Do you know, or?
I don't.
Okay. They use nine?
I'm not, I'm not sure how many they use.
They use nine.
They use nine, okay. I just think that with the, the size of our population, getting nine quality people would be as or more effective than having-
I think getting them interested will be the issue, not the quality.
Right, okay.
I've talked to many people, and there are a high number that are interested. And they are wondering why we committed to nine.
Has anybody else heard from the community requesting more than nine?
No, and I know people who are interested in, in actually being on the commission. Ms. Hogan, how many people have applied or expressed interest so far, since we started having the meetings about home rule?
Um, I've probably received maybe three, three separate emails.
We've been discussing it for a couple of months.
Correct.
I, I think that it, if, even if there were, I think it would be healthier if, if there were, say, 15 people that actually did get on the ballot, that it would be an opportunity for the community to question and vet these people, as citizens should, and get down and with some competition to, whether it be nine or 11 or whatever it is, and, and get that picked out, rather than saying, oh, we got 13 that apply, you're all in. I think that would be a little healthier, just in my opinion.
And so to compare to Castle Pines, their population is 10,306.
Okay, so it does not seem like there's board consensus for changing the number of nine. At this point, I'll close the public hearing portion and bring it back to the board for a motion.
I make a motion to approve ordinance number 28-2021, an ordinance initiating the adoption of a Home Rule Charter for the Town of Monument, providing for the election of charter commission members, authorizing participation in the 2021 coordinated election.
Second.
We have a motion of second. Ms. Hogan?
Trustee Stevens?
Yes.
Trustee Lakind?
Yes.
Trustee Anru?
Yes.
Trustee Romanella?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
No.
Mayor Protem Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes. That motion passes 6-0. Ordinance number 29-2021, ordinance annexing, address known as Third Street. Ms. Harrington?
Actually, I'm going to start the presentation for tonight, and Ms. Harrington's going to finish it.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Wilson and trustees. Tonight's presentation is on the annexation and zoning of three enclave parcels, and the Town of Monument is the applicant. However, we do have two of the property owners in, in the boardroom tonight, investing in Front Street LLC, which is 32nd Street, and Mr. Dominowski's property, which is 251 North Front Street. And the ordinances are from 29 to 34. Each property has two ordinances, and we will explain why that's, why there's two ordinances later in tonight's presentation. All three properties are considered enclaves, essentially a property surrounded by land already in the incorporated area of the town. Per Colorado State statute, the town can unitarily annex properties that are within the town enclave. This means that the town, as the applicant, can request annexation via the adoption of annexation ordinance by the Board of Trustees. An enclave that has been in existence for three or more years may be annexed by ordinance. These properties that form the enclave has existed for more than three years. All three property owners agree with the annexation and have been working with town staff. The first property location is investing in Front Street, located at 32nd Street, which is 1.01 acres in size. This property is the old Cybo property. Project location number two is Mr. Dominowski's property, located at 251 North Front Street, which is north of the previous project location, and it's .93 acres in size. And project number three is Elite Properties of America, Inc., located adjacent to I-25 and west of Jackson Creek Parkway, and it's .89 acres in size. And this is part of the Village Sketch Plan, approved Village Sketch Plan. The owners of the two developments, developable area within downtown are ready to develop a site plan and final plat with all required to be reviewed by staff and approved by the Planning Commission and the Board of Trustees. 32nd Street and 251 North Front Street will be zoned as downtown business district. It's consisting zoning designation with the surrounding town properties. An owner of 32nd Street plans to submit a mixed-use development site plan after the annexation process. The objectives of these two downtown parcels is to maximize the mixed use and commercial uses of the properties. The town will serve water and monument sanitation will serve wastewater. And the parcel adjacent to I-25 and west of Jackson Creek Parkway will be zoned as planned unit development, which is consistent zoning designation with the approved The Village Sketch Plan. The property owner plans to submit a mixed-use development final PUD after annexation process. One more water and sanitation will serve water and wastewater services to this parcel. No one from the public spoke for or against this project when it went to Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission approved the projects 5 to 0. And the Planning Commission recommends approval of the enclave annexations and the respective zoning designations based on the staff report findings that the proposed annexations and zoning designation complies with all standards and criteria for approval. Next, Megan Harrington, our planning director, will discuss the staff recommendation motions for the annexation and zoning of the three enclave parcels.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor and trustee members. For the record, Megan Harrington, for those of you that I haven't met, planning director. You have six motions here, simply because there are three separate properties. Each of the ordinances that we included in your packet state the findings on which you're making when you, if you vote to adopt these ordinances. For the annexations, you have an annexation ordinance for each of the three properties, as well as a separate zoning ordinance. Again, when you're making findings on the annexation, those findings come out of state statute. Your zoning findings, however, are coming out of your town, our town code. So that's why we separate them. At the end of all this, we also record those. So we separate them out again, because when we record those with the clerk and recorder, it comes in clean on title. So we record the annexation ordinance and the zoning ordinance for 251 Front Street, and only those documents are recorded against the property. So we have a clean understanding of exactly, for each owner, what was approved here this evening. So again, a lot, a lot of separate motions, but there is a method to the madness as far as documenting those findings. I'm happy to read those out loud, or Mayor, if you're going to go down through the list. There are three on the ordinance section, because those are legislative, and then three under the quasi-judicial, because the rezonings are the quasi-judicial action.
Okay, this, this is also a public hearing item. Is there anyone from? Can they speak on any of the three? For the public hearing portion? So I can have one public hearing for all three, or do I need to open up separate public hearings?
They are listed all together, so I think it would be appropriate to do all three together. Anyone that they would have comment on, you can take comment on.
But we still have to have three separate votes on this piece?
That is correct. You have to pass each ordinance separately.
So I will open the public hearing portion for anyone who would like to speak for or against any of these ordinance, being ordinance number 29-2021, 30-2021, or 31-2021. Mr. Anderson, do we have anyone online wishing to speak? Okay, do we have anybody in house that would like to speak? Sir? Please.
First of all, I just wanted to say, I'm speaking for the process here. It's been a while, and it's a long time coming, and I'm glad to see it finally happen for my property, 251 Front Street. But the reason I wanted to stand up is that I had an opportunity to work with the town and work with the Planning Commission, and, or Planning Department, rather. And I was pretty naive in a lot of this process. And every time I had a question or anything to deal with here, I just want to say how great it was working with the Planning Department, and especially with Debbie. It was nice to know that when I had a question or didn't understand something, I shot her out an email, and the next morning, right away, that email was answered, and I had my questions answered. And for me, as a citizen and a property owner in town, I just want to say that that was so important to me, that the answers are there. And I just think the town is blessed to have the quality people that they do, and especially Debbie Flynn. So that was the reason for me wanting to get up and speak, so.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay, I will go ahead and close the public hearing portion of this and bring it back to the board for further discussion or a motion. These are all enclaves.
I move to approve ordinance number 29-2021, an ordinance annexing to the Town of Monument, the property addressed as 32nd Street, consisting of 1.01 acres.
We have a motion of second. Ms. Hogan?
Trustee Lakind?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Trustee Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Elliott?
Yes.
Trustee Romanella?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Anru?
Yes.
That motion passes 7-0. Ordinance number 30-2021, do we have any further board discussion, or do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to pass ordinance number 30-2021, an ordinance annexing the Town of Monument, the property located east of Interstate 25 and west of Jackson Creek Parkway, consisting of .9 acres.
Second.
We have a motion of second. Ms. Hogan?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Lakind?
Yes.
Trustee Anru?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Trustee Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Elliott?
Yes.
Trustee Romanella?
Yes.
That motion passes 7-0. Ordinance number 31-2021, annexing 251 North Front Street. Do we have any further discussion or a motion?
I move ordinance number 31-2021, an ordinance annexing to the Town of Monument, the property addressed as 251 North Front Street, consisting of .93 acres.
Second.
We have a motion of second. Ms. Hogan?
Trustee Romanella?
Yes.
Trustee Anru?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Trustee, Trustee Lakind?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Elliott?
Yes.
Trustee Stevens?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
That motion passes 7-0. This takes us to item six. This is the quasi-judicial public hearing items for these same properties, adding them, amending the official zoning map for said properties. Reminder, our most recent policy on remote attendance. Trustee Anru, Trustee Clark, you will not be voting on these 6A, 6B, or 6C. Ms. Harrington, do you have anything to, do you have another presentation or anything to add to this?
No, sir, not unless you need additional detail.
Does anyone from the board require additional detail?
I just have a question. I think the enclave concept is kind of odd, how an area would be in the county that's not in the town. I know, I know you're new, so you wouldn't know the history of how these things happen. But my recommendation is if there's any future annexation, we should probably watch-
we should probably watch for these things and not have them where they, I think this is a great idea to, you know, make everything consistent.
Yes, sir.
I believe, and I think we've discussed it in the past, that some of these, the paperwork just never got finished.
Yeah, and I think we've identified seven or eight more that we'll be bringing to you over the next year. So we were working on the entire enclave that we have throughout the town right now.
It should be noted that under state law, you cannot do this type of ordinance until the property has been completely surrounded for at least three years. So they either come in voluntarily or you do this later on down the line.
Yeah, but I guess my question is, when you do annexation, you're annexing here, then you're annexing here. You have to annex here and then, you know, you have this. And somehow you left that out as part of the process. I, that just kind of.
And trustee Stevens, you're right, it is not optimal to leave enclaves. So when we, if the town is approached by any property owners wishing to annex in the town of Monument, we as staff will certainly be looking for adjacent properties or those properties that may be excluded by an annexation request and try to pull those property owners in together to offer up that annexation. So yes, and as we start to, one of, one of the, you know, things we will be looking at in the Planning Department is, soon as I get my feet under me a little bit more is, you know, the town boundaries, those other enclaves. It sounds like you will be well versed in enclaves by year's end.
Thank you.
So at this point, I will open up a public hearing for ordinance number 32, 2021, 33, 2021, and 34, 2021. Is there anyone who would like to speak for or against any of these properties being annexed and added to the official zoning map? Mr. Anderson, do we have anyone online? Okay, I will go ahead and close the public hearing portion and bring it back to the board for further discussion. These ones, we also have to pass as separate votes.
That is correct.
Okay. So for ordinance number 32, 2021, is there any further discussion or a motion?
Make a motion to pass ordinance number 32, 2021, an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the town of Monument, establishing the town business zone district related to the area known as 3, 3 Second Street and consisting of 1.01 acres.
Yeah, second.
We have a motion of second, Ms. Hogan.
Trustee Romanella?
Yes.
Trustee LeKind?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Trustee Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Elliott?
Yes.
That passes five zero. Ordinance number 33, 2021, is there any further discussion or a motion?
I'll move to approve ordinance 33, 2021, an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the town of Monument, establishing the Plan Unit Development Zone District related to that area located east of I-25 and west of Jackson Creek Parkway and consisting of .89 acres.
Second.
We have a motion of second, Ms. Hogan.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Trustee LeKind?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Elliott?
Yes.
Trustee Stevens?
Yes.
Trustee Romanella?
Yes.
That motion passes five zero. Ordinance number 34, 2021, does the board have any further discussion or a motion?
I make a motion to pass ordinance 34-2021, an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the town of Monument, establishing the Downtown Business Zone District related to that area known as 251 North Front Street and consisting of .93 acre.
Second.
We have a motion of second, Ms. Hogan, please.
Trustee Stevens?
Yes.
Trustee Romanella?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Trustee LeKind?
Yes.
That motion passes five zero. That takes us to item 7A, a resolution authorizing the town manager to file the 2020 audit. Ms. Ohms.
Thank you, Mayor and trustees. Tonight we have here with us representatives from Henkel &amp; Company, who performed the town's audit for 2020. You'll find a copy of the final 2020 Town of Monument audited financial statements in your board packet this evening. First state statute, we're required to file the town's audit with the state no later than July 31st of 2021 unless an extension is requested and granted by the state. The documents you have before you are the result of many hours of staff time as well as the auditor's time. We've submitted Resolution 42, 2021, to request the Board of Trustees authorize the town manager to file the 2020 audited financial statements with the state to meet our annual filing requirements. Wade Fisher from Henkel &amp; Company is here this evening to give a brief overview of the audit process and how things went. We are both then available to answer any questions you might have related to the documents that are in front of you.
Well, good evening, everybody. Good to be here. Wade Fisher and I'm with the public accounting firm Henkel &amp; Company and we performed the audit for the town of Monument. And first and foremost, auditing is kind of what I do, but it's not who I am. You've gone through a lot of accounting things tonight, a lot of numbers. And I'm going to simply say straightforward, this is a clean audit. It's the best that you can get. We went over the details with Rosa and her team was excellent. They provided us everything that we needed, very cooperative and she runs a very tight ship, quite frankly. And I'm going to read one thing from the audit report, if I may, and it's the auditor's opinion. It goes, "In our opinion," and this is on page two of the audit report, excuse me, "the financial statements referred to above present fairly, in all material respects, the respective financial position of the governmental activities, the business-type activities, each major fund and the aggregate remaining fund information of the Town of Monument, Colorado's December 31, 2020, and the respective changes in financial position. And where applicable, cash flows zero for the year then ended. And this is the big one in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America." You can't get a better grade than that. And smooth audit, like I said, and so there's not a whole lot more to say. I will take some questions if you have any about it.
Do we have questions from the board? Appears we have no questions. Thank you, sir. Ms. Ohms, did you have anything, anything further to add?
No, Mayor.
And this resolution is just giving direction to the town manager to file the audit.
Definitely. And it just, I want to comment, Rosa and her staff have done an amazing job with this audit. You remember, at the same time we're going through this audit, we also were going through, you know, God, I'm having the worst time with words today, COVID. And we were going through COVID and her staff were in and out and working from home and stuff like that. And we're, and, and a lot of times the auditor couldn't come here. And so working online and stuff like that was very difficult. And so to be able to get an audit with this kind of opinion is amazing for our staff.
Excellent. There are no other questions? We'll look for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 42-2021, a resolution authorizing the town manager to file the 2020 audit report with the state auditor.
Second.
We have a motion of second, Ms. Hogan.
Trustee Romanella?
Yes.
Trustee Unruh?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Trustee LeKind?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Elliott?
Yes.
Trustee Stevens?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
I am, I am going to abstain from this vote.
On the grounds of?
I'm afraid I can't state the grounds.
Okay, that motion passes six zero one. That takes us to item eight, public comments for items not on the agenda. Do we have any members of the public that would like to make public comment? Sir?
Good evening, Mayor Wilson and board. I do not support or agree with the constant, with the continued violation of my constitutional rights and freedoms. This board has no legal right or authority to deliberately make ordinances for their enforcement agencies to create procedures that supersede our constitutional provisions. And this fact is clearly stated in our constitution. Not even in the case of an identifiable, identifiable pandemic or emergency disaster declaration and not on the basis of promoting a virus that does not rise to the legal definition required of a pandemic or without, excuse me, providing clear, legal, credible, scientific proofs of that pandemic definition. Original, our original medical format followed prior to this declaration of disaster through the Public Health Department has worked effectively for decades. This new chosen medical methodology is bankrupting our state, it's destroying business freedom and causing me egregious financial distress. This decision was not made in accordance with our constitution, but has been dictated to us by the unilateral decision of one individual. Things may be more relaxed now here in Monument, but it is time for every elected official to step up with integrity to uphold their oath of office to protect and defend our constitution. Instead, you have illegally taken away my constitutional rights and not governing according to our constitution in a continuous manner for 17 months, willfully, deliberately, and wantonly, without regard to the egregious losses we, the people, are suffering. I demand that this board bring forward an immediate Constitution and Bill of Rights resolution to ensure that all businesses, places of worship, and governmental meetings will remain essential to protect and support all citizens. I want a Constitution and Bill of Rights Sanctuary Town Resolution, like what the Nevada counties have passed, in such a resolution. Stop violating my constitutional rights as a U.S. citizen now. I am asking for the mayor of this board to call for a special meeting to be held immediately that will address the implementation of a new Constitution and Bill of Rights Sanctuary Town Resolution, based on what Grand Junction is already doing and in other parts of Colorado. In that special meeting, let this be the only issue considered and voted upon. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make public comment? Ma'am?
They supposed to state their name and?
Oh, Ms. Hogan, did you get?
I did not.
Sir?
Did they sign in?
Okay, thank you.
Do we have a sign up sheet up there? Okay, is there a pen? Okay, will you please sign in, ma'am, before?
Yes, I will bring this down a little bit. My name is Kimberly Drawsdick. I live in Monument. And I also do not support or agree with the continued violation of my constitutional rights and freedoms that this board has, and that this board has no legal right or authority to deliberately make ordinances for their enforcement agencies to create procedures that supersede our constitutional provisions. And this fact is clearly stated in our constitution, not only United States Constitution, but the Colorado Constitution. Not even in the case of an identifiable pandemic or emergency disaster declaration and not on the basis of promoting a virus that does not rise to the legal definition required of a pandemic or without providing clear, legal, credible science proofs of that pandemic definition. I do have legal recourse in a court of law through my right of due process of law to protect myself from these violations and will act to press charges against every elected or appointed individual for the continued violation of my constitutional rights. Our original medical format followed prior to this declaration of disaster through the Public Health Department has worked effectively for years. This new chosen medical methodology is bankrupting our state, destroying business freedom, treading on my personal First, Fourth, and Fourteenth Amendment rights and causing me also egregious financial distress. This decision was not made in accordance of our constitution, but has been dictated to us by the unilateral decision of one individual that governs our Colorado state. It is time for every elected official to step up with integrity to uphold their oath of office to protect and defend our constitution and everyone underneath it. Instead, you will have illegally taken away my constitutional rights and are not governing accordance to our constitution in a continuous manner for over the past 17 so months, willfully, deliberately, and wantonly, without regard to the egregious losses we, the people, are suffering. I have a daughter who is six, who is struggling to keep her social interactions because of these egregious wanton laws. And I am giving you legal notice that you have no legal authority to violate my constitutional rights. I demand that this board bring forward an immediate Constitution and Bill of Rights resolution as well to ensure all businesses, places of worship, and governmental meetings will remain essential. I want a Constitution and Bill of Rights Sanctuary City Resolution, like what the Nevada counties have passed in such a resolution and just like Jeremy said, across other counties in the, in Colorado. Stop violating my constitutional rights as I am a U.S. citizen. I'm asking for the mayor of this board to call for a special meeting to be held immediately that this will address the implementation of a new Constitution and Bill of Rights Sanctuary City Resolution, again, based on what Grand Junction is doing. And in that special meeting, let this be the only issue considered and voted on. I respectfully and thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Anderson, do we have anyone online wishing to speak? Okay, do we have anybody else who would like to speak, sir? Yes.
So I just wanted to make an observation and a recommendation. I'm Joe Bartholomew. I received that survey regarding the home, home law rule. That was confusing as all get up. So just to give you a little background, retired Army and I couldn't understand it. So most Army manuals are written at the eighth grade level. Not that I, you know, I've gone to college, but you need to get the pros and cons and then maybe vignettes of also the pros and cons for what the actual home law rule does for the citizens of the town. The reason for that is because if you're not doing that, they're not informed and they're not going to vote on it. So you still have the status quo of what's going on. I'm not saying that's good or bad, I'm just saying that's supposed to happen. So my recommendation would be use the Nextdoor app or other apps and it's free, not to pay anybody, you just have to be clear in how you write it, put out your end state, the bottom line up front, just put it out to the town. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else who would like to make public comment? Sir?
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor, board. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Stephen Walsh and I also do not agree or support the continued violation of my constitutional rights and freedoms. This body does not have the legal right or authority to deliberately make ordinances for their enforcement agencies to create procedures that supersede our constitutional provisions. And this fact is clearly stated in our constitution. Not even in a pandemic, identifiable or not, can we have our constitutional rights violated. Our original medical format followed prior to this declaration of disaster through the Public Health Department has worked effectively for decades. This new chosen medical methodology is bankrupting our state, destroying business freedom and causing me personally egregious financial distress. This decision was not made in accordance with our constitution, but has been dictated to us by unilateral decision of one individual. It is time for this board and every elected official to stand up with integrity and to remember and uphold your oath of office to protect and defend our constitution. For the past 17 months, our constitutional rights have been willfully and deliberately violated. And I am giving you notice that I do not accept my constitutional rights being violated. I also demand that this board bring forward an immediate meeting for the Constitutional and the Bill of Rights Resolution to ensure all businesses, place of worship, and governmental meetings will remain essential to protect and support all citizens. I want a Constitution and Bill of Rights Sanctuary Town Resolution, like what other counties have passed. Please stop violating my constitutional rights as a U.S. citizen. And I am asking for the mayor to call for a special meeting to be held immediately that will address the implementation of a new Constitution and Bill of Rights Sanctuary Town Resolution. And in that special meeting, let this only be the issue that is voted on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there any other public comments? Ma'am?
Good evening, Lord Mayor. I'm Kim Walsh. I also do not support or agree with the continued violation of my, my constitutional rights and freedoms. This board has no legal right or authority to deliberately make ordinances for their enforcement agencies to create procedures that supersede our constitutional provisions. And this fact is clearly stated in our constitution. Not even in the case of an identifiable pandemic or emergency disaster declaration and not on the basis of promoting a virus that does not rise to the legal definition required of a pandemic or without providing clear, legal, credible, scientific proofs of that pandemic definition. I do have legal recourse in a court of law through my right of due process of law to protect myself from these violations and will act to press charges against every elected or appointed individual for the continued violations of my constitutional rights. Our original medical format followed prior to this declaration of disaster through the public health department worked effectively for decades. This new chosen medical methodology is bankrupting our state, destroying businesses from freedom and causing me financial distress. This decision was not made in accordance with our constitution, but has been dictated to us by the unilateral decision of only one individual. It's time for every elected official to step up with integrity to uphold their oath of office to protect and defend our constitution. Instead, you have illegally taken away my constitutional rights and not governing accordingly to our constitution in a continuous matter for seventeen months, willfully, deliberately and wantonly, without regard to the losses we the people are suffering. I'm giving you legal notice that you have no legal authority to violate my constitutional rights. I will pursue charges in a court of law to fight back against your deliberate, wanton and willful, willful violations of my constitutional rights. I demand that this board bring forward an immediate Constitution and Bill of Rights Resolution to ensure that all businesses, places of worship and governmental meetings will remain essential to protect and support all citizens. I want a Constitution and Bill of Rights Sanctuary Town Resolution like was passed like what Nevada counties have passed in such a resolution. Stop violating my constitutional rights now. I'm asking for the mayor of this board to call for a special meeting to be held immediately that will address the implementation of a new Constitution and Bill of Rights Sanctuary City Resolution based on what Grand Junction is doing and many others. And in that special meeting, let this be the only issue considered and voted on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay. Who is the participant? I am ready. Let me know when he's on.
I assume that was for me. This is Ryan LeVere.
Uh, yes, go ahead.
All right, thank you. My name is Ryan LeVere. I'm a resident of Monument. I have been resident for the last couple of years. One thing I want to point out is that the last couple of speakers have been following a very dedicated script. They following a method of, of speaking from a attendance or a meeting that was held in Grand Junction in recent weeks. That, that meeting was attended by one of your local trustees. Shall remain nameless, however, that trustee for, forewent a participation in a a monument trustee workshop to attend that meeting. So I find it curious that she's that person, excuse me, I gendered. That person chose to attend that meeting, but forewent the participation in the workshop that would have alerted her to the number of, of, of people that are interested in participating in the Home Rule Commission. But at the same time, so I, I'm just curious about the, the intent of these, these people following the script and speaking in support of a radical agenda. So I would caution trustees following their, their recommendations or their, their requests at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, you were next.
My name is Tracy Hanley, and I'm here with a radical agenda.
Order, please.
I do not support or agree with the continued violations of my constitutional rights and freedoms. This board has no legal right or authority to deliberately make ordinances for their enforcement agencies to create procedures that supersede our constitutional provisions. And this fact is clearly stated in our constitution. Not even in the case of an identifiable pandemic or emergency disaster declaration and not on the basis of promoting a virus that does not rise to the legal definition required of a pandemic or without providing clear, legal, credible, scientific proofs of that pandemic definition. Our original medical format followed prior to this declaration of disaster through the public health department has worked effectively for decades. This new chosen medical methodology is bankrupting our state, destroying business freedoms, causing mental health problems and causing people financial distress. This decision was not made in accordance with our constitution, but has been dictated to us by a unilateral decision of one individual. It is time for every elected official to step up with integrity to hold their oath of office to protect and defend our constitution. Instead, you have illegally taken away my constitutional rights and not governing according to our constitution in a continuous manner for seventeen months, willfully, deliberately and wantonly, without regard to the egregious losses we the people are suffering. I demand that this board bring forward an immediate Constitution and Bill of Rights Resolution to ensure all businesses, places of worship and governmental meetings will remain essential to protect and support all citizens. I want a Constitution and Bill of Rights Sanctuary City Resolution like what the Nevada counties have passed in such a resolution. Please stop violating my constitutional rights as a U.S. citizen. I am asking for the mayor of this board, of this, I'm sorry, mayor, to call for a special meeting to be held immediately that will address the implementation of the Constitution and Bill of Rights and the Sanctuary City Resolution based on what Grand Junction is also doing. And in that special meeting, let this be the only issue considered and voted on. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Mr. Anderson, do we have anyone else online? Okay. At this time, I will close the public hearing or public comment portion of this meeting. And we will move on to item nine A Fountain Creek Watershed District requests. Ms. Hogan?
Just as simple as that, the Fountain Creek Watershed District would like the board to make a proclamation for their Creek Week event on September seventh.
Is that?
Asking for board approval.
Okay, so doing the proclamation on the seventh?
Correct.
Is the board good with that?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any other board authorization items? Okay, item ten, Board of Trustee comments. I'm going to go ahead and start with Board of Trustee comments. Mr. Ricci, you've been here since prior to the pandemic. Which ordinances has the, this board passed that violates anybody's constitutional right?
None that I'm aware of, Mayor.
Okay, and my fellow board members, have you taken away anybody's individual rights? Trustee LeKind?
No, I have not personally taken away anybody's constitutional rights.
Trustee Stevens?
Thought we passed a resolution that businesses were essential in the town.
Thank you. Trustee Romanello?
No, I don't believe I have, and I do recall speaking very adamantly about this in December and us passing a resolution to protect liberties here.
Mayor Proton Elliott?
No, I have not taken away anybody's constitutional rights. And yes, I do remember passing the resolution to protect our liberties.
Trustee Enru?
I did not recall taking away anyone's rights either. And I mean, to everyone's point, I think the resolution was done in order to preserve everyone's rights.
Trustee Clark?
I don't believe that any individual of the board would deliberately do such a matter or such an issue. But I do know that the constitutional rights of the people are being violated, not just on a state level, but on individual county levels as well. And constitutional attorneys have voiced their opinions in regard to those violations occurring. So I understand what the people are trying to say. And I understand that we individually and personally have not done these things, but we have supported the state that has. Thank you.
Okay. Any other Board of Trustee comments?
I have some.
Go ahead.
So first, on a light note, it was an amazing privilege to serve as a member of the VFW Local Post in Monument and ride in the parade that was held on the third of July with my G.I. Joe pickup truck. I should have watched out for the mayor and his ride. I could have helped tow him, but it was a great way to bring in a holiday that celebrates patriotism and freedom and liberty and represent the town later at one of our booths at the street fair. On a, on a note that's not so light, this Sanctuary Town Status email barrage is getting to the point of harassment. As someone who has sworn an oath six times to defend this country and has actually gone into combat, clearly, if you can't bring the original author of this resolution along with your supposed constitutional attorneys that I think are made up and a figment of your imagination in front of this town board and present to us evidence of how we have violated your rights and you're going to sue us? I say bring your lawsuit because you have nothing against the members of this board. How dare you accuse us of violating your rights? We have passed no resolution, none, that violate your constitutional rights. And if you want to sue me, I'm right here. Sue me. I dare you.
Any other board comments? Seeing none, I will one clarification for town staff. Now that the police ballot language has passed, that means town staff or police can no longer participate in any exchange of information other than so do you guys plan on putting on anything factual?
I don't have any plans on that yet. Chief, do you have any?
And second question is, when was the deadline for that ballot language? Ms. Hogan?
I believe Andy would.
Okay.
Better.
So in order to get the ordinance passed and through in time for it to be certified, we've worked out that it has to be done at this regular meeting or it had to have been done at this regular meeting or at a subsequent special meeting in order to get it done. So you have to sort of, you have to get it passed and it has to get thirty days before September third.
Okay.
Mr. Merrick, Board, so the only, the only thing I still see pending is a a police informational that went out similar to our two E fact sheet, which we issued last year. We still have members of the community calling in, asking how they can support this as well as the Chamber of Commerce. So that would be the, probably another document sent to attorney for, for legal review based on the facts, like our recent flyer that went out. And then we would have everybody refer to that or the issue committee moving forward.
Thank you. And is the chamber considered an arm of the town staff?
They are not, and town staff are permitted to take any action they like to support this or even to go against it on their own time. So they are, they are allowed to take action as private citizens, just not on town time with town resources.
Okay. Thank you. At this point, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.